Lunenburg Zoning Board of Appeals. I'm going to tell you how the hearing will proceed. My first step to give you a notification. The hearing is being recorded in accordance with the requirements of the open meeting law. Please be advised that this meeting will be broadcast live through local access cable, on Facebook Live, on the public access Facebook page, and will be able to be found on the Lunenburg Public Access YouTube channel within 24 hours after the meeting. To participate remotely from a computer, go to the Zoom meeting. Computer and app users may use the raise hand feature to request a speak. With that, I'd like to introduce the board. To my left is Lisa Normandin, the board secretary. I am Alfred Gravel, James Bezakowski, Hans Wintrop, Patrick Callahan, Tony Nacastro, and Steve Duba. And the way the hearing will proceed is Lisa will read the application and any other submitted communications. The applicant will have the opportunity for comments on the application or submission of additional documents. You will please come forward to the mic and give your name and address. And board members will have the opportunity to ask questions that they might have on the application while you're at the mic. There will be a public comment period. Please come forward to the mic, give your name and address, and address all comments and questions to the board. And with that, we have two hearings tonight. The first one is 7-Eleven Mass Ave. It's a permit that was granted on March 10th, 2021, for two four-unit townhouse buildings. And the special permit has lapsed because it's over two years. The second case is the 15 Cliffview Terrace. It's an appeal of a person agreed by the ruling of the building commissioner that short-term rentals are prohibited in Residence A zoning district. And with that, I would ask Lisa to please read the first.
This is an application for a special permit, Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 48, Section 9, Zoning Board of Appeals. The name and address of the applicant is EF Realty LLC, 654 Elm Street in Leominster, Massachusetts, 01453. The undersigned hereby makes application as follows. A special permit is being sought for the construction of townhouses at 7-Eleven Massachusetts Avenue per Section 250 4.1h6 of the Town of Lunenburg zoning bylaws. The project site is in the Residence A and limited business residential zoning districts. The proposed action has not begun. The basis for this application is found in the following section of the Lunenburg zoning bylaw, Section 250 4.1h6. The street address of the property is 7-Eleven Massachusetts Avenue, SS map 59, parcel 30. The name and address of each holder of legal title to the land, which is the subject of this case, is EF Realty LLC, 654 Elm Street in Leominster, Mass. The deed is recorded in Western Northern District Registry of Deeds, Book 9140, Page 357, and recorded 8/14/2018. If the undersigned has any knowledge of a prior appeal, application or petition concerning the land or building involved in this case, describe the case and the dates involved. A special permit was issued by the Lunenburg Zoning Board of Appeals on March 10th, 2021, for two four-unit townhouse buildings. The special permit has since lapsed. And this is signed July 3rd, 2023, by Eric Fowler of 654 Elm Street in Leominster. There's a letter here from Haley Ward, dated July 3rd, 2023, regarding EF Realty's special permit application. Dear board members, on behalf of our client EF Realty LLC, Haley Ward, Inc., respectfully submits this letter in conjunction with the special permit application for townhouse development at 7-Eleven Massachusetts Avenue. EF Realty previously received approval for a special permit from the board on March 10th, 2021, for the construction of two four-unit townhouse buildings. The permit has since lapsed as no action on the permit has taken place in two years after the issuance of the permit. EF Realty received approval from the planning board for stormwater permit and site plan review on September 13th, 2021. During the permitting process with the planning board, the project went from two four-unit townhouse buildings to four two-unit townhouse buildings. In addition, the Conservation Commission issued an order of conditions on February 23rd, 2022, for the project. Lastly, this office is currently in the final stages of obtaining an access permit through the Massachusetts Department of Transportation. As shown on the provided design plans, the application for the special permit is for the construction of four two-unit townhouse buildings, with each unit having three bedrooms per townhouse. The townhouses will be accessed off Massachusetts Avenue, Route 2A, via a 24-foot wide driveway and served by 16 parking spaces, two spaces per unit. Six of the units will include one bay garages. The following additional information is provided in response to Section 12 of application for special permit from Zoning Board of Appeals. A. Will the proposed action be injurious and dangerous to the public health or unduly hazardous because of traffic congestion, danger of fire or explosion, or other reasons? The reply: The proposal includes the construction of four two-unit townhouse buildings totaling eight units, which will be serviced by a 4-foot wide paved driveway off Massachusetts Avenue west of Chestnut Street. Massachusetts Avenue can handle the increase in traffic due to the project. The project will not be injurious and dangerous to the public health or be a danger of fire or explosions. B. Will this action have a material adverse effect on the value of land and buildings in the neighborhood or on the amenities of the neighborhood? The reply: The proposed use of the project as townhouses will not have an adverse effect on the value of land and buildings in the neighborhood as the use is consistent with the surrounding mixed uses of single-family homes, businesses, and a large townhouse development near the project. C. Will the proposed action be operated with reasonable regard for order and sightliness if in open use? The response: The proposal does not include an open use as the project consists of residential townhouses. D. Will the proposed action produce noise, vibration, dust, odor, heater, glare observable at the lot lines and amounts clearly detrimental to the normal use of adjacent property? The response: The noise, vibration, dust, and odor created during the construction phase of the project will be mitigated as necessary and will not have a detrimental impact on adjacent property. The project is not expected to create any vibration, dust, odor, heater, glare after the construction is completed. The noise of the project site after the completion of the construction will be consistent to residential developments and will not be detrimental to the normal use of adjacent property. We look forward to working with the Zoning Board of Appeals on this project. If you should have any questions or require any additional information regarding this or any other matter, please do not hesitate to contact me at the office. And that's signed Haley Ward, Incorporated, Wesley R. Fliss, P.E., Senior Project Engineer. And this is a letter that was sent for the first application from the then-Building Inspector Casey Burlingame regarding 7-Eleven Mass Ave Proposed Townhouse Project Determination Letter. I have reviewed the proposal and have the following comments. The property is currently an undeveloped 4.452-acre parcel of land in the limited business residential district. The proposal is two townhouse structures on one lot and one common driveway serving both structures. It is my opinion as the zoning officer that this use in this district requires a special permit through the Zoning Board of Appeals under Section 250 4.1G, Use Table 4.1h6. In addition, under 258.4b5, site plan approval is required. Lastly, two dwellings on one lot can only be allowed if approved by the planning board under Section 250-3.4. And that's all, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Lisa.
You're welcome.
With that, I would invite the applicant up to the mic to address anything else you would like to add or to review this project.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Eric Fowler, Representative of EF Realty LLC. I think the information that Lisa read and which we had provided earlier sums up everything. The only thing I would like to add is that this project is something that I'm not physically able to complete on my own. So I am in the process of selling the property. There is an agreement, an offer, signed offer from McSweeney Builders. I don't know if you guys are familiar with them, but they've built hundreds of homes in other communities. And they would make certainly a good steward of building these townhouses on this land. And so that is something I just wanted to add to this, that the intent is to sell the property. It was something that I got involved with a few years ago, but is not something I'm able to complete on my own. So it behooves me to sell the property.
Thank you. I would just add, the plans say that it was revised. And I know that the original plan, as I recall, the plan itself showed two-bedroom units per. And I know that when we had the discussion, we talked about two or three.
Right.
So I know that's in our original things. And now we changed it all to three. Is that the only revision to these plans?
Yes, that's that and the fact that the original plan presented to the zoning board was two four-unit buildings, and now it's four two-unit buildings. And the square footage of, so there's eight total units, the square footage of four of them, of one set of four and another set of four slightly different. So it's not completely determined yet whether there'll be three in all of them or three in some of them and two in the other because one will be without a garage. So it's really just the flexibility of being able to work within the footprint and come up with a product that meets the market needs. But the target, of course, is, you know, it's nothing to advertise or restrict the property, but we're looking to, we know this demand from the over-50 community, especially from the folks across the street at Stone Farmer Estates. So we're, you know, myself and the new builder, McSweeney, is certainly looking to target that type of buyer, if you will. So giving them that flexibility offers them some ability to develop a product that's more market-specific for that community.
Okay. And this, you already went to the planning board?
Yeah.
And I know you would probably have to check with them, but I don't believe you're going to go to, they already approved this project?
They did.
Okay. And I don't believe we're talking to Adam that you have to go back to them as you've been dealing with the Mass for the right paperwork.
Right, yeah. At some point, so if this offer goes through, the property will be sold by August 31st. The, this is a step to accomplish part of that. The other step is to get the permit from Mass DOT. The last information we have is that it's under review in the PS and E stage, and the reply will come no later than August 3rd. So once we have the ZBA's approval, the SOAR permit, the Mass DOT, the site plan from, you know, the planning board, all those things we needed to accomplish in order to move the project forward. So they're all sort of in that final stage of coming together. I've already had the conversation with Adam. The planning board approval, I think, is good up until September, so that will need to be extended as well. But we've already had that conversation with him. So we'll have to apply for that when that time has come.
Thank you. With that, I'd open it up to the board. Question?
You just mentioned that one unit or one building would have no garage. I don't understand that.
Yeah, so the site was, initially, we tried to get the same footprint and same design for each of the buildings. It would be easiest to do. But given the, some of the modifications that came out of the planning board review, we had to condense down one of the buildings and move it in order to meet some of the requirements. And so that eliminated the garage.
So is that one building or one unit in a building?
One building.
So if, so three of the buildings will have two garages, one for each unit?
Yep, a single car garage.
And this one will have no garages at all for any units?
Right.
Did you think about putting in a separate garage to accommodate a separate situation like that?
We maximized the footprint as much as we could, given the constraints of the lot. And that's, you know, the best we could come up with that went through many generations, gyrations to get to where we are.
Thank you.
Other questions from the board?
You done, James?
Yes.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman. So is that, so this is a final plan that we have in front of us?
Yes.
Is there a reason that you let the special permit lapse?
Yeah, I mean, honestly, it was a little bit of me taking my eye off the ball because of other things going on. I originally didn't intend to let it lapse, but the focus was on the Mass DOT permit. And I lost sight of the fact that this date sort of came and went. But when it got near to that, shortly after that timeframe, and I realized it expired, I had contacted Lisa in hope to get an extension with some, through the COVID relief. But the building commissioner mentioned I would have to go back through the ZBA. So that's why we're here tonight.
Okay. And then the only other question I had, Mr. Chairman, was I was looking back at the original meeting that we were at, this particular application. And there were two, let's see. Yeah, there were two conditions. One, the stone wall shown on the submitted plan must be contiguous in that we must, they must relocate one parking spot closest to Mass Ave. But that looks like it's irrelevant now because of the redesign of the buildings from four twos to, four twos, two four-twos from two fours.
Yes.
So I'm wondering, I see this stone wall here. Is that intended to be the contiguous stone wall that we conditioned way back in 2021? Do you know, right there?
Yeah, I know what you're pointing to.
I mean, you have a driveway, so you're going to have to have access to the driveway. But I'm assuming that, you know, our colleague, who was not here tonight, that was the original. And I think it was, he wanted, it was important to him to keep the architectural aesthetic looking of the stone wall there.
That's right.
Okay. So if my understanding is okay, I'm fine with what they have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Any other questions from the board?
Do, if we're, he's in the process of selling this property. Isn't there something that says that a special permit goes with the person and not the ownership of it? So that if he sells it, it'll have to come back again?
No, it won't. We can put in language, in fact, we have language to the effect. He will not have to come back again.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
That was my question.
All set? Okay. With that then, I will accept the motion. Oh, yeah, public discussion, is anything?
No questions on Zoom.
Would anyone from the audience like to speak? Seeing none, I will bring it back to the board and ask for a motion.
I'll make a motion that we grant the special permit as requested with a continuance of the conditions from the previous special permit as requested.
As Hans pointed out, that's been, the new plan that's been changed. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. We have a motion in a second to approve.
Aye.
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 An aye. With that, it has been approved.
Thank you, guys.
I do have to read you the post-special permit instructions. The special permit is granted with the contingency that the petitioner complies with all licenses, regulations, statutes, and ordinances of any and all applicable local, state, and federal boards or agencies with jurisdiction over the premises. The special permit is subject to periodic review by the permit granting authority or the enforcement officer to ensure compliance with any conditions. Noncompliance to such conditions may result in refaciation of this permit. A copy of the board's decision shall be filed with the town clerk within 14 days. Any party agreed by the board's decision may appeal to a superior court 20 days after the decision is filed with the town clerk. After certification by the town clerk, that 20 days have elapsed since the decision was filed, you should have it recorded in the registry of deeds. No special permit shall take effect until it has been recorded. And lastly, special permit shall lapse within two years unless substantial use of construction has commenced. With that, you have your special permit.
Thank you, everybody.
You're welcome. Thank you, you're welcome.
Have a good night.
And with that, it is 7:20. We do have a second hearing, as I had stated. Just let us get our papers ready for the next one. Are you ready, Lisa?
I'm ready.
Okay. Please read the application.
This is an application, appeal from a person aggrieved, Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 48, Section 8, Zoning Board of Appeals. The name and address of the applicant are Greg and Terry Smolka of 15 Cliffview Terrace in Lunenburg. The undersigned hereby appeals as follows. We are appealing the ruling in the March 30th, 2023, letter from Casey Burlingame that short-term rentals are prohibited in the Residence A zoning district. Our interpretation of the Lunenburg zoning bylaws is different than what Mr. Burlingame presented in the letter. The proposed action has begun. The basis for this application is the following section of the Lunenburg zoning bylaw, Section 250 4.1, Table of Uses. The street address of the property is 15 Cliffview Terrace in Lunenburg, SS map 30, parcel 36. The name and address of each holder of legal title to the land, which is the subject of this case, is 15 Cliffview Terrace LLC, oh, sorry, 15 Cliffview LLC, 33 Orion Way, Groton, Mass. 01450. The deed is recorded in Western Northern District Registry of Deeds, Book 10313, Page 353, and recorded 4/22/22. We have no knowledge of a prior appeal application or petition concerning the land or buildings involved in this case. That's signed May 12th, 2023, by Greg and Terry M. Smolka of 15 Cliffview Terrace in Lunenburg. The letter from Mr. Burlingame dated March 30th, 2023. Mr. and Mrs. Smolka, this office has received numerous complaints in regards to the property located at 15 Cliffview Terrace, Lunenburg, Massachusetts, parcel ID 3036. This property is in the Residence A zoning district. Property records indicate the owner of the property to be 15 Cliffview LLC. You are listed as the agents for 15 Cliffview LLC. Please be aware that the current Town of Lunenburg zoning bylaw does not allow for short-term rentals in 250-4.1, Table of Uses. Table of Uses footnote number one, further dictates that any use not defined or included in the use table shall be considered prohibited in all districts. This information was verified with town council. Please cease and desist the operation of a short-term rental slash Airbnb at 10 Cliffview Terrace within 30 days of receiving this order. Failure to comply with this order may result in fines and/or court action taken against you by the Town of Lunenburg. If you or any party is agreed by this order, you have a right to appeal this interpretation to the Zoning Board of Appeals as outlined in 258.3b1. Sincerely, Casey Burlingame, Building Commissioner, Zoning Official. Board of Appeals Application, 15 Cliffview Terrace, Question 10. When my wife and I bought this property in November 2021, we believed we did all proper due diligence concerning legal use of the property. We checked the Hickory Hills Landowners bylaws and found no short-term rental restrictions. We checked the Town of Lunenburg bylaws and found no specific short-term rental restrictions. We followed the proper registration papers with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, certificate number C0349531620 attached. So we were very surprised when we received the cease and desist letter from Mr. Burlingame. The letter explained that because short-term rentals are not specifically allowed on the use table, they are therefore prohibited. This was clearly not our interpretation as we look for specific exclusions. In addition, the definition of short-term rental is not clear. For example, if I understand correctly, seasonal rentals and rentals of 30-plus days are not prohibited. However, I don't believe these cases are addressed in the use table. Using the same logic, that use is not specifically allowed or prohibited, it seems that seasonal rentals and 30-plus-day rentals would also be prohibited. There is a copy of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Department of Revenue Room Occupancy Excise Registration Certificate in the name of Gregory L. Smolka, 15 Cliffview Terrace in Lunenburg. And question 13, for the reasons outlined in question 10, we were surprised when we received the cease and desist letter from Casey Burlingame. While we now understand this interpretation, we did not at the time. While we believe the language, definition, and bylaws around short-term rentals is not clear, we are willing to take the property off the short-term rental market. However, operating good faith, we made rental commitments to a number of people, including Lunenburg neighbors. We respectfully request that we are allowed to fulfill these commitments. With approval to fulfill these previous commitments, we agree that we will immediately take the unit off the short-term rental market and accept no further short-term rental bookings. These current commitments are presented in Table 1 below. I plan to retire this year, and my wife will retire from teaching after the next academic year. After a long search, we were thrilled to have found 15 Cliffview Terrace, and we look forward to moving into this property next year. We appreciate your consideration in this matter. And there is a list of Cliffview commitments to October 27th through October 30th of this year. There's an abutters list. All these abutters were notified two weeks prior to tonight's meeting. And there's a copy of the certified letter that was received. I also received a memo from the Lunenburg Board of Health, Agent James Gurefi. Lisa, the listing for the rental indicates the dwelling has four bedrooms. The sewage disposal system permit and the Title V inspection report indicate the septic system is designed for three bedrooms. The house shouldn't be used in a way that exceeds the capacity of the sewage disposal system. The system is nearly 50 years old, according to the permit. And that was from James Gurefi of Nishoba Associated Boards of Health. I also received this letter this morning via email from Tom Mason, Jr., to Lunenburg Zoning Board of Appeals. Due to an international flight, I will be unable to attend the meeting on July 26th with regard to 15 Cliffview. Please accept my comments by email. Short-term rentals must not be allowed in residentially zoned areas. I urge the board to uphold the town zoning bylaws and to disallow any exception. Massachusetts Supreme Court has affirmed that short-term rentals are forbidden in residentially zoned districts. My family has lived on the lake since the 1950s. Hickory Hills has no culture of allowing short-term rentals on the lake. Short-term rentals have detrimental effects on a town, primarily due to the issues of increased housing scarcity and the erosion of community cohesion. As short-term rentals facilitated by platforms like Airbnb proliferate, long-term rented properties are often converted into lucrative short-term accommodation, exacerbating the housing crisis and driving up property prices. This contributes to local residents being priced out of their own neighborhoods, leading to a loss of diversity and a weakening sense of community. Additionally, the constant turnover of transient guests in a residential area can lead to disruptions, noise complaints, and a decline in the quality of life of permanent residents. The decrease in available housing and the erosion of community ties can result in a negative impact on local businesses, schools, and essential services, making short-term rentals a concerning prospect for the overall well-being and sustainability of a town. The recent lake property tax crisis has cost the Town of Lunenburg nearly $1.5 million. The cause of that crisis is the outrageous price the owners paid for 15 Cliffview. They paid that price not because it was worth $1.3 million as a residential property, but because they believed it was a fair price if the property was operated as a business. The high purchase price of that property then drove up the values of all homes on the lake, including subsequent sales, which in turn has cost the town $1.5 million in uncollected taxes due to inflated property values. The board must uphold our zoning regulation. Do not permit illegal short-term rentals. Tom Mason, 32 Hemlock Drive. We also received a memo from the building commissioner, but he is here, so we will let him paraphrase his findings. And that's all, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Lisa.
You're welcome.
Then I'm going to invite the applicant up to address.
Good evening, how are you? I'm Greg Smolka, this is Terry Smolka, 15 Cliffview Terrace. And I think a lot of what we had is in our petition is included in the documents, but I wanted to add a little bit of color to that. The property, you know, we didn't buy this property to be a income property, to be a, you know, a long-term, short-term rental or anything like that. We, you know, we purchased it in October 2021 with the intention to move into it in 2024. Various reasons why we weren't going to be able to move into it there, but the intention was to move into it in 2024. We figured in the meantime, you know, we had been looking around for a lake property to retire in, and they don't come up very often. And this property had, it was a great location, the community was, you know, really what we were looking for. And so when you have an opportunity like this come up, you take advantage of it. And so we figured, okay, we'll rent it for a couple of years before we move in. We considered both long-term and short-term rentals, and thought we did our diligence and work on it, and looked at both the Hickory Hills bylaws and the City of Lunenburg bylaws and didn't see the restrictions, didn't understand the interpretation, but that's what it was. We, you know, registered with the state, put all the documents in with the state. That has, you know, the listing of the property in Lunenburg. Again, we figured since we registered with the state, and Lunenburg never objected to that, we didn't understand there was any problem with this at all. So, you know, we went through all that. We actually, as I said, we considered both long- and short-term rentals and ultimately decided to do short-term rentals because it would actually give us the opportunity to spend some time at the property and enjoy it when it was not being, when the tonsils was not being rented. So we went through all that, didn't really realize there was any issue until somebody mentioned during the property assessment meetings, the question of short-term rentals came up, and somebody had said, well, they're not allowed here, which, you know, threw me back a bit. I was actually at the meeting. I said, well, I looked at all the documentation, I can't find anything that says they're not allowed. And then later got this, got a letter from Casey Burlingham that was here. By the way, I tried to contact Casey by email, by phone numerous times, could not contact him. Finally, I went into the office in person, and Lisa was super helpful in explaining that, no, Casey wasn't there anymore, he's gone on, there's a new guy coming in. She referred me to Adam, who was also incredibly helpful in walking us through the process of what we had to do here. And I take you through all that, just to let you know that, like, through this whole process, you know, first of all, we thought we did everything in compliance. We were trying to do everything in compliance and continue to. And I think at the end of the day, you know, we're not asking that you say, hey, yes, continue, you can do short-term rentals. We're not asking for that. We made certain commitments to people. All we're saying is let us finish out those commitments and be done. And so that's what we're looking for. I did also have a couple of letters from our next-door neighbors on either side of us, both in support of what we're proposing today. So I can, I don't know how we read those into the record.
To Madam Teresa. Do you want to read them in?
You'll be reading them. This one is dated July 26, 2023. I write, "In full support of our neighbors, the Smolkas in their request to fulfill their last few months of commitments to their tenants. Since they began taking short-term rentals, the tenants have been nice and respectful of the neighborhood. Smolkas have communicated well with us regarding their plans, and we look forward to welcoming them to the community full-time." And that's Jim LeBlanc of 3 Cliffview Terrace. Dear Lunenburg administrators, we are writing in support of our new neighbors, Terry and Greg Smolka of 15 Cliffview Terrace. We completely understand and applaud the effort of the Lunenburg community to prevent a commercialization of our beautiful environment, including short-term rentals and their disruptive effects, which we as neighbors are quite aware of. However, at this stage, the short-term use of 15 Cliffview Terrace is only scheduled to last until October of this year, so we are nearly there. Terry and Greg have been making an effort to minimize disruptions as much as possible, and we have been communicating well. Considering that these types of short-term rentals are a new phenomenon for us, and that it has been easy to be unaware of the fact that they are either neither permitted nor welcome in Lunenburg, we would ask that this particular case, in this particular case, could be considered an exception so that 15 Cliffview short-term rental situation can continue until October. Perhaps it is also possible to clarify our values and rules in the bylaws so we can make them very obvious for other residents to prevent potential confusion and conflict in the future. Thank you so very much for your consideration and efforts." And that's from Thomas Byron Karina Beanstra of 19 Cliffview Terrace in Lunenburg.
Thank you, Lisa.
You're welcome.
Okay. Do you have anything else you want to add?
The only other thing I would add is that once we heard that this was an issue and got notice, we stopped taking any rentals past that last October 30 date. October 30 date was actually, I think, booked in November of the previous year, and we just, after, we cut everything off past that. So again, just trying to make sure we're doing the right things, but at the same time, want to be able to honor the commitments that we had made to people.
Okay. Thank you. So before you bought the property or while you were in the thing, you said you looked at some of the bylaws and different things, didn't see anything. Did you actually talk to Casey Burlingame?
No.
And ask him or Adam about?
I did not talk to them or ask them about that beforehand. I looked at the bylaws, I looked at the use table, but I did not specifically ask them.
Okay. All right. Any questions for the board?
Just asked the same question that I was going to ask. Are you still renting to the people that you made a commitment to at this point in time and just stopped anything in the future?
Yes, there's a series of rentals that were booked through the end of October.
Right.
Yes. So those are in place, and we have not stopped those, but we've stopped anything that has passed October 30.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board for the applicant? Person aggrieved, hearing none. I think what I'll do now is I would like to call the building inspector. He has submitted his report and his filings, and he is the new building inspector. Now you know that Casey is gone.
Okay.
And so I would invite Brian up to the building commissioner.
Ryan Jengres, Building Commissioner, Town of Lunenburg. I gave you guys a lot of documents already, which I don't want to go reading through for you. I do about a page and a half paraphrasing everything that I put forth. The appeal tonight really, it comes down to one point. While the short-term rentals are allowed under the bylaw, not as it's currently written, not really based on one property, whether you can do it for two or three more months. As we know, with an open town meeting form of government, bylaws written, various amendments over the years, and decided by the will of the people through town meeting. So it makes my job to interpret what the will of town meeting was. And in this particular case, we have a bylaw that very clearly defines what a dwelling unit is and what a dwelling in is. And it defines a dwelling as, sorry, trying to paraphrase instead of reading the whole thing out to you, defines a dwelling as "any building or part thereof used for habitation for one or more persons, but not including commercial accommodations for transient occupancies or trailers or mobile homes however mounted." When you look at the definition, the bylaw doesn't define transient. Building Code does, Mass. General Law certainly does in various locations, as being accommodations under 30 days. You look at commercial, we don't define commercial, however, commercial commonly referred to "for gain, for profit." Short-term rental is essentially transient use, for profit, or maybe for breaking even to pay a mortgage, but it's still for gain. I presented you with this specific case, Alexander Styler versus the Zoning Board of Appeals of Lynnfield. That case addresses every single point of this appeal, defining what a residential use is versus transient. It addresses short-term rental under a very similar bylaw to what we have here. And in that case, it was determined that short-term rental is a transient use, one not fitting with and consistent with a residential permanency that you would get from a single-family or even a multifamily zoning district, as being a Residence A, the primary use is being residential. Again, I refer back to Styler repeatedly, as it is a very recent case from June of 2021. It's the only one of its kind in Massachusetts. It finally kind of got the courts to address what short-term rentals are, as we were starting to head down the slippery slope, unfortunately, of, as some of the neighbors pointed out, turning long-term rental into short-term rental, taking housing off the market, et cetera. Further, I want to address the point of the request that they allow it to continue through October. That's akin to allowing a temporary use variance. We do that here, we get the next person coming in. While the board granted us 90 days to do this, we want 90 days to do short-term rental on the lake again. And it's just, I'm not sure the board has the authority to grant a use variance, much less a short-term use variance. Those are my points. I, again, gave you full bullet points of everything, how the ownership changed hands, et cetera, but it really comes down to one specific case, Styler versus Lynnfield. It's already been decided in the courts in this case, so I don't want to rehash it to death, but that's all I've got. If you've got any questions for me.
I do have one question. Go ahead, James. My question was, you said it was a 90-day grace period from when they applied or something to stay the rentals. But if we say no tonight, that means they have to stop any of the rentals from today forth?
Pretty much.
And/or do they have a right to hear about an appeal?
They could appeal to courts, and we go down the road of dragging Styler into...
But does the stay apply to that appeal?
It would. If it's being appealed, then yeah. There's no further enforcement action while it's being appealed.
Thank you.
Yeah, as I read in the post, they do have the right to appeal
Sure.
our decision to Superior Court.
Sure. That was essentially what happened with Styler. I'm going to make, and it's actually, I think, my question was similar to what James is talking about, but I'm going to give you a hypothetical. And I appreciate, you know, your feedback on the fact that you think that it's not allowed, which I concur with you. But the hypothetical is, you know, if we don't allow them to do their, to the end of October, by the time they appeal, Superior Court comes, that date is coming on. Okay. But I'm just saying that that's...
I'm going to put out right now, I don't think that we as a board have the right.
Oh, no, you're right. I don't think so either.
I'm just putting that out so you know, that I don't feel we have the right to say, okay, it can go through October.
I think the building inspector said it best, right? We're here to interpret the bylaws, as is he. If it's not allowed, it's not allowed. And I mean, the applicant can certainly go to town, meaning put a warrant on there and try to get it passed.
Right. And I can actually see their confusion because, you know, the use code does say if it's not a permitted use, I mean, it's prohibited. And the definitions, the court case that the commissioner pointed out is recent, it's 2021, and it clearly defines the difference between long-term, 30-plus days, versus short-term rentals, being, you know, a week or up to 30 days as short-term. And it clearly came out with the difference between them in residential zones, and why it was, why they found that it was, you know, the zoning did prohibit it. And that was in Styler versus Zoning Board of Appeals of Lynnfield. And I think you have a copy of that case?
Yeah.
Any other questions? Well, the building inspector, commissioner is here?
I do not. Thank you.
I don't.
Okay.
Public comment?
Uh-huh.
Public comment?
Yeah. I'm going to just say one more thing. They're here under 250 4.1B, and that's, it basically says, "Any use not specifically listed or otherwise permitted in a district herein established shall be deemed prohibited." The recent ruling from Styler versus Lynnfield, "Short-term rental use of one-family house is inconsistent with the zoning purpose of the single-resident zoning district in which it is situated. To preserve the residential district character of the neighborhood, the use of the property for short-term rentals is not a permissible use under the Town of Lunenburg zoning bylaw and should be upheld by the decision in the conclusion," you know, now of two building inspectors, is that Burlingame and our current commissioner. I just want to point that out. Any public discussion? Seeing none? Is there anybody on Zoom?
I do have at least seven Zoom members, so just encourage everyone to use the raise-hand feature, please.
Yeah, encourage them to raise hands for questions and take them.
Still none. Trying to view this every way possible, just in case, and I still don't see any. Seeing none.
None. Okay, if there's no public discussion, bring it back to the board, and I will ask for a motion. No other comments or questions.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we deny the applicant's...
Petition.
Yeah, petition for a person aggrieved, for the following reasons, that it is not, you know, is not allowed in the...
Uphold the building commissioner.
Yeah, uphold the building commissioner's letter that it's not allowed in the Town of Lunenburg. And I, in respect to the applicant's request in terms of continuing to honor their commitments through October, as much as I'd like to say I'm in favor of it, I just, if it's illegal, you can't do it, and so I'm not in favor of that either. So I would say no to that.
Okay. Thank you. Do I have a second?
I second.
We have a motion, a second. I will take a vote.
Aye.
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 Aye. Aye. And aye. With that, the decision of the building inspector has been upheld. I will read you, though, that "A copy of the board's decision shall be filed with the town clerk within 14 days, and any party agreed by the board's decision may appeal to Superior Court within 20 days after the decision is filed with the town clerk." After certification by the town clerk has elapsed, the decision should be filed and recorded. And with that, yeah, done.
I'll make a motion that we adjourn if we don't have any further...
Secondation or otherwise?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And with that, this hearing is adjourned.